Thanks for coming, everybody. So, I guess we will open with Eric. Would you like to lean off? Would you like to wait after the presentation?
That's the order.
Besides, I have my mouth full.
You're here, everybody. Eric Swan, 14 Old Farm Way, Chairman of the Building Committee. So, here we are tonight with another presentation for you. I guess to say that in terms of what we have here is we have the next step in the part of the process. I know a lot of people feel that a lot of input and changes and we heard about trust, but going back, there has been a lot of work done, there has been a lot of studies done, and those studies have all accumulated, I think, to this point. And we'd like to show in the presentation how we arrived at this option and why we feel this option is best in terms of adding the most value for the town and solving issues that have been brought up before us about site, about building size, about program. But that, we'd like to see. I would just like to see the process, and it seems like we keep going around, and I'd like to focus on understanding what the positives can be and how we can decide as a town and group what the best elements are so that we can build and move forward. It seems, you know, we've gone in circles and I've brought all my presentations with me to go back to if need to, but how do we drill down? How do we get to the positive steps? How do we define, understand the needs, decide on that, and then go forward?
Okay, thank you. And thanks for your work. It's like a chair of the Building Committee, endless many, many hours put in. I thank you for that. All right, now we have Mr. Jeff Shaw to give us a presentation.
Thank you. Jeff Shaw, Principal at Context Architecture. Many of you know, presented several times now on this project. We were hired by the town as well as the owner's project manager, Vertex, to pick it up basically earlier this year and move through a more intensive process to get to final recommendation. So, presentation tonight starts with a look back, or I guess most of the presentation is a look back over the various concepts, starting with a first initial concept and then to where we are today. And I should stress that this progression that I'm showing on the screen is really an iterative thing. We've done an option, it's been reviewed by the committee, we've talked about pluses and minuses, and weighed those, decided to move on to a second and a third, and now the final proposed option based upon the weighing of the pluses and the minuses. And so, all of the things that have come before this have gotten us to this point. They're not necessarily options to be selected at this point, they're simply just underpinnings of where we are today because for various reasons they didn't work or weren't applicable. So, this slide just shows from the beginning, we started with a program of about 26,000 square feet, split between two different buildings. Second concept, we dropped that down, basically to meet a budget. The third concept refined that a bit, but both second and third concepts didn't meet the goals of either department. And at the last Board of Selectments meeting, we were asked to come back with an option that met those goals, the minimum amount of building size, which hopefully beats financially, something the town can approve and go forward with. So, very quickly, just what I said, the first concept was the large program, two separate buildings. The second concept changed from that, reduced the program but kept two separate buildings. Third concept, reduced the program, well, it was the reduced program still, but combined them into one building. So, you got some efficiencies of building one building on the site, and then now here we are today, one combined building, but this is the minimal amount of program that can be built. You'll see it's bigger than the last concept, but it is the minimum that both departments need. So, in detail, the first concept, this is the site plan that was reviewed. Main Street's off to the left, Morgan Ave runs along the bottom. The existing fire station is in the middle, the existing town hall is on the left, and this option proposed in addition to town hall. And then on the right, a new police station. It was a requirement, chased upon, build out of police at the town hall and fire for all town functions there, of 118 parking spaces. This concept had a total of 104. This was the initial design concept presented, and I'm not going to go through the plans, but we did floor plans for the police station and we did floor plans for the town hall with a renovation in addition. This was the budget, both buildings included, total project cost of over $14 million. That's one of the big reasons why that option wasn't going to fly. So, we went to a second concept. Site plan here, wasn't presented at the time, but we prepared it, even though, just for consistency's sake, this site plan shows a smaller police station and less of an addition to the town hall. It still doesn't meet the parking requirements, basically not much has changed between this and the prior option. Again, we did plans of this option, it did reduce the police station quite a bit, and the big killer in this option was the town hall squeezing it all back into the original footprint. It just really wasn't going to meet the needs of the town. And then, obviously, it's a smaller budget here, but the town hall wasn't being met, its needs wasn't being met. So, the idea was to move to a third concept that took the advantages of combining everything into one building and trying to share space between the departments. Town hall, police could share certain current elements of the building, including elevators, bathrooms, mechanical spaces, a big meeting room like this, this room here, the selectmen's meeting room, didn't use by police as well. So, a lot of shared functions. So, this site plan here, which again was not shown at the time that we presented at the Board of Select in last, but it's now been produced, shows that the entire building sits approximately where the existing town hall is. The existing town hall is the white dashed line, I don't know if you can all see it there, superimposed on the gray, new proposed footprint of the town hall. This option is starting to get in the right direction because we exceed actually the required number of parking spaces. As we looked at last time, we looked at building plans that combined both departments, but there were some issues with these plans that needed to be tweaked. Both departments weren't quite getting everything they needed out of this building. It was still a little too small, and it wasn't meeting the needs of the town. When presented last, we looked at a budget that totaled about eight and a half million, but there were some things below the line that added up to some additional costs, so overall it was about 11 million. And that eight and a half million is important because at original meeting with the Board of Select, when they asked us to look at a project of eight and a half million going forward. So, we found that even at this eight and a half or 11 million total project cost, we weren't able to meet the needs of both departments. So, here we are today in the proposed option. The site plan, very similar to the one you just saw, slightly bigger building, only slightly though. It does meet the parking requirements, and I think another feature that this and the previous one also established is that in addition to a shared building, you solve the traffic issues that are present in its current configuration with the multiple entrances to the town hall, parking lots not being clear where people should drive in and out of, and also being very close to that intersection, being dangerous spots. So, making the entrances to the parking around town hall a little bit further away from the intersection is important. And I think because of the way that the building fits into the site and the way that we've broken down the massing of the building with the cables, ends of the building, it will fit in well with the scale of some of the other buildings around. I think pushing it closer to the corner helps establish a presence on this corner here. However, it is obviously, you know, taking up a good bit of the land space around it. So, there's only about 30, 35 spaces that are around the town hall, police station itself, and some of those will be used for police. The remaining spaces is 80 spaces in that back lot on the right-hand side of the fire station. So, you know, big, big event, there will be some parking, people will have to walk a little bit of ways to the town hall. But I think, given the land that is available, this is so far the best option that we've been able to produce, the needs, the needs of both departments, and I think the best site plan so far out of all the options. I won't go through the floor plans, but here they are. We've gone through them in detail with the departments. Both police and town hall staff believe they work well for their departments at this stage, they've met the minimum requirements. There's more design work to be done. This is very, very early. If this project's approved and goes forward, you'd have to go through at least another six months' worth of detailed design and documentation work before it can actually be bid. So, there's a lot more to do, but we have here today the kernel, the essence of what needs to be built, and it works for both departments. This is the budget. As I said, last time, last time was 11 under 12, this is, it's now 12 million, right on the nose, and this anticipates, you know, moving forward at a pace to get the building built. You can't wait another year or two years, this number wouldn't be good. So, it's at 12 million now. And then, the same slide as the beginning with the numbers added, so you can see where we tracked, started at 14. We dropped it down, but then we found that that was too restrictive. The program didn't work to meet the needs of the town, we had to bump it up a little bit, and then finally this last jump into where we are today. And then, last slide here just simply goes through a progression of what would happen if we took what we have today and proposed to build it in two separate buildings, basically go back to the original concept, how much more would that cost? Because there's an important concept in this proposed option is that because we're building where the existing town hall is, we actually have to move the police to a temporary location because they're located there now, they can't, you know, live there while the building is being constructed. We'd have to temporarily relocate them to essentially where the parking lot would be proposed. So, that adds $750,000 to the proposed project budget. Well, in this scenario, we actually get to deduct that 750, we don't have to pay it. But we do have to pay a bunch of other things. We have to increase the size of the project because we're splitting them into two buildings, we can't share them anymore. We have to increase fees for design and engineering and all the other stuff that goes into building two projects. We have to assume that you're not going to build them at the same time because it's a lot of money to spend, probably be built over a progression of years. So, there's time, a time factor that adds to cost. And then contingencies would add additional monies as well. So, we factored less the 750,000, it's about a million dollars of additional cost trying to separate these two buildings out. So, the other way to look at it is that a combined facility is saving the town a million dollars, building it at the same time. So, that's the presentation, that's where we are today. Be happy to answer questions if you have.
Any questions or comments from the board? We'll get the public comment.
No, it's good to know what this cost savings is.
And I should point out, this is simply on the construction of the building, we haven't touched the operations costs of maintaining and operating two separate buildings, which would only increase each year.
Does this building include a third floor?
Yes, this, as we've discussed in the past, we would propose to build an attic essentially that had an elevator stop and a stair that went up there. It wouldn't be built for office space, it'd be built for storage, because it's about 3,000 or 4,000 square feet of space available in the attic. It's part of this budget, it's included in the design right now that we were, we'd be planning to help, you know, mitigate some of the storage needs that we know the departments would have.
That's finished?
Yeah, I mean, it's a rough space, but it's, you know, it's got all the life safety, the lighting, all the other components that we need, but it's raw storage space essentially.
Wouldn't have, would it be walls looking like this, or would it be walls looking like what?
I expect there would be drywall partitions where we would need to build walls, but I suspect there also wouldn't be a whole lot of walls up there, that just reduces the flexibility of use. I'm assuming there'd be a lot of shelving units, depending on sensitivity of the documents.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, I'm going to open a public comment. I'm going to ask everyone to come up and stand where Mr. Shaw was, that way the microphones and the cameras can pick you up for the people at home. So, Bernie, come on up.
Burnt Field, 64 Main Street. I'd like you to pull up the picture of the two different buildings showing, still showing the septic system, the leaching field in the existing town hall.
I think what you're referring to is that if you pull in now currently, there's a, you can pull in and there's a retain wall.
There seems to be a lot of emphasis on parking. Now, when you were showing the two separate buildings, you showed that you still left the septic system in place and you didn't have enough parking. But when you put the new building up, you've eliminated that, and you've got plenty of parking, and that, it creates mistrust in myself. You know, I think, well, why didn't, why did they leave that in there and start yakking about parking? That's, that's just bothers, that's all.
I'm confused, can you explain that again?
Pardon?
Can you explain that again? I don't understand.
Well, you know, there was emphasis on parking.
Yeah.
Well, when he first started talking about the parking, he was pointing to the two separate buildings.
Yeah? These two buildings, right here?
No, no. It was way back.
Okay.
And it shows, it shows the septic system still in place. You don't have it there. No, you don't. It shows the septic system still in place.
This one, yeah? This one like this?
Yes, there you go.
Okay.
And he says there's not enough, and you can take that septic system out of there, which you've done on all the others, the parking doesn't become a problem.
Jeff, you want to say? That's the one you're talking about, right? The one that's on the screen?
There, right there.
Yeah.
Now, if you take that all out.
So, yeah, you're right, you're right. What do we did on this side of the site, I don't know, Bernie, people can see me best, but on this side of the site, we did not change the parking layout. It's exactly what it is today.
Right, right.
And the only reason we did that is because of all the focus, as you can see, we're only renovating this, all the focus about spending money is over here.
Okay.
That's the reason this option was done. And so, to sort of handle the budget of the project, we minimized the amount of cost the town was spending to simply renovating the existing facility and not dealing with site costs and not reconfiguring. It was, because this was so focused on cost efficiency. Yeah, all that could be done, but you didn't want to spend the money on it.
All right. And before I recognize the next speaker, I just want to put an end to the notion of mistrust or deceptiveness. I'm offended by that. My only stake in this is as a 38-year-old taxpayer in this town, there's nothing deceptive. I feel like my job is to find the best use of the taxpayers' money and the best plan going forward. I, I, I'm very offended by that. I take seriously what I do, I follow the rules, and I look out for the best interest of all of you, and I'm going to step on that right now.
I, I understand what you're saying, and I definitely did not mean to offend anybody here, but that's the concept that happens, like, two months ago, one of my neighbors come and said, Bernie, you're going to the selectmen's meeting. And I said, what? It's about the police station. I said, what, they're talking about the grand opening? And, and he laughed, and I said, no, what's it about? He said, they haven't built it yet. I said, what are you talking about? They should have the frame up by now. And he said, no, he said, I ain't kidding, I thought he was pulling my leg. That's how naive I am. But I definitely don't intend to point at people or, or offend anybody, but that's just, I was flabbergasted. I thought it was all over, done with, and we were going on to other things.
We all wish it was. Yeah. All right, thank you, Bernie.
Thank you for explaining that.
Would anyone else like to make a comment? Come on up. Jan Forrest.
Should I worry?
No.
Just a quick question. Jan Forrest, 72, Old Point Road. Do we have copies of that for those of us who can't see the TV out the side of the room?
Yes. I've got a few.
A few?
Yeah. Thank you. I'll share the chat.
I got my own. Okay, any other questions or comments? Vince Russo.
Good evening, folks. Vince Russo, CBU Way. The only thing I'm worried about is, look at what's happening in the rest of society, the big box stores, the malls that were built 15, 20 years ago and now become the paper. Look at Amazon, what they're doing. What I'm wondering is, should we be looking more at a virtual town hall where we utilize computers, remote access? And if you do have to come into town hall, you see computer modules all over the place like you do with a lot of stores there. Some of the big box stores like a combination, even have it so that you can go into the side desk and pick up something you want online, so you don't even have to talk to anybody. So, are we overbuilding for the future? The kids are using computers in first grade now. So, if you're building for the future, less than 15 years from now, us old romers will be gone, and you'll have everybody computer literate because they're learning it, they're in first grade now, in 10 years they'll be graduating from high school. So, and, you know, you talk about the needs of the town hall, because if you've done a business case, you see what the advantages and disadvantages would be of not going to a big box town hall, because look at what's happened in other parts of society, the big boxes are grown. Would anyone want to?
So, what I'd like to see happen is have an IT consultant come in and look at how the town operates, and I would like to move to electronic records. I'd like to, I'd like to see, I'd like to see most of the storage that we're talking about, I'd like to see it digitized and saved that way. We'll save costs from it as far as storing it, as far as making it, because I know when we had a whole bunch of the dump, they got musty and moldy and building, and the town moves and stuff. I'd like to see more of an online system similar to what, how you're able to buy your parking stickers now. I'd like to see you be able to pay taxes that way and move, but none of us have the expertise for that. We need to hire an outside consultant to come in and take a look at it.
And that's, that's what we've done. We've gone through many exercises to determine the needs of where we're at now, and we're at a minimum program now.
Right. But as far as a big box, a big box store, this is not, I don't, I asked the town administrator, is this, the worst thing that I want to see happen is build a project that we don't fit into from the moment we open the door. So, I don't want to build something too big, I don't want to build something too small. I do not want to waste taxpayers' money, including my own. So, I am going to be really asking you, Jeff, to make sure that in the design and plan phase, that it is done to the, to the square inch, so that we do not have any, that when we move into, I want to, I want to move into exactly, know exactly where we're going and exactly where we are. I don't think we're overbuilding, I'm not, I am not in favor of overbuilding, but I think you guys get my point.
Mr. Chairman, may I? That smacks of regionalization. We've been through that with the police, with the fire. I fought against that because I think our police and firefighters are the best in the town, I trusted my life to them. We also, behind those computers of workers, they have to be somewheres, even if you fill out the form online, someone has to take it down off of their computer. That person needs an office. That's what this is about.
We need the space.
Right.
Yes, Eric?
So, for, in the process of reconfirming the program, and Chief, you can speak to this as well, that in terms of looking forward of full-time equivalents for police use, that there are, in the forecast of, how many years can we forecast? Do we go 20 years, or do we just go 10 years? So, you're 20?
20, 25 years.
25 years, that there's no more new, we're not planning on 10 additional officers being filled out over the next 25 years. It's taking staff and part-time officers that we have now and making them full-time. So, there's not, there is no space in the plan that is looking to accommodate additional staff and growth in the police department. It's to make more part-time workers, full-time workers is the outlook.
That would be, that would be my recommendation, my plan, yes.
Yes. And then there are some spaces. It was Bob Connor's suggestion from some work that he's doing at universities, it's certainly the thought in university police and safety departments. It's my experience with some educational, it's my experience with officer business, that there are more shared spaces. There are some spaces in here for the reports, instead of having a room which was previously defined as a space, is now basically a corridor with a countertop.
It's an alcove, yes.
An alcove. So, we took away the door, we took away the extra space in the room, and we're, we're sticking a counter, and that's part of the forward thinking of utilization space. So, we have, you know, we have done that.
Trying on us. Joe?
I think, at least for me, what happened in this process was we were not able in the beginning, and we tried, but we weren't able to hire the architect and the OPM, or at least the architect first. And we went forward, we tried to establish some sort of number to get things done. The problem with doing that is, and, you know, selectmen can't design a building, it was hard for me to understand the difference between a wish list and program uses. And program uses are the uses that are structurally put in place throughout any towns that Jeff is going to go to, their needs, that the police or maybe the town hall with as many people as we have, they're just square footage program needs. They're almost like an algebraic formula. So, what happened then to me as a selectman, the only thing I could do beyond the program needs is say, well, I think that doesn't work, I think you're all wet, you don't know anything, or I can go back to try to decide the best way to construct the building with the best material that met the program needs. And at that point, I know people might not like what it cost, but it's almost something that I have to do, I have to bring it to the public, because you're all grown-ups, you can say, no, I hate that, and turn it all down and not go further to town, meeting all the ballot. And that's what our job is. And if it had been a wish list, if everyone had just blown up big offices or something, it would be different. These are program needs. And me, as a guy that's 71 years old and in business and probably not totally stupid, it was hard until I really understood program needs. So, that's where we stood today, at least for me, and that's why it took me a while to understand the whole process, and the combined building seemed to make the best bang for the buck with all the combined things we talked about, trying to make as much out of the program needs as we could.
Come on up, Bernie.
Just a question. Now, if, if you put this plan forward with a single building with everybody in it, and it doesn't fly, do you, now do you have to build a standalone police station, or can you just say, nope, we're not going to do nothing?
I mean, the decision... I mean, the decision really lays with the board of selectmen. I'd have to refer to town council for the ins and outs of that, but you know, what we arrived at is, you know, six point five is a very ambitious budget, and we can't, you know, the cost per square foot's risen with the improvement in the economy, with tariffs, material costs have gone up, and you know, construction outfits are busy now that weren't so busy five years ago.
But what I'm trying to get you to say is, no, we won't have any part of a standalone police station. That's my question.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not going to speak for the board. I'm inclined, as I never seen of it, you know, for myself, but I can't speak for us.
The town of Newbury has needs. We need a police department.
Oh, no, I don't, I'm not questioning your morals or whatever. I understand.
We need it. I would honestly, if I had, could wave a magic wand, I would like to see a standalone police station, a brand-new fire station, and a town hall that looks like a little rural community town hall, but that would not be the best use of taxpayers' money. And I couldn't go home at night, put my head on the pillow, and sleep with myself. I couldn't do it. We have a tremendous need, and this is, I think, this is the best way to get both needs done. If we do a standalone police station, eventually we're going to have to come back and do a town hall again because we still don't have one. And to stay here indefinitely is not the best use. I don't believe it's the best use of the taxpayer's money. So I would have loved, loved, loved to be able to build a standalone police station for six and a half million dollars, renovate town hall, clean up that basement, maybe bump out the back, put a medition on. If six and a half million could have done it, that would have been great, but it just, it can't happen. I can't get blood out of a stone.
Anyone else like to comment that hasn't yet? Come on up, Fred.
Nope.
You're not going to comment. People with much worse legs than you has come up in front of the camera.
I cannot.
You can come up in camera. Would anyone else like to comment?
I cannot get cable television, and I do not kowtow to cable television.
Public comments closed. You can respect the meeting like everyone else.
But I am a Newbury citizen, and I do have a right to speak. You can try to shut me up, but I'm going to keep going anywhere.
I'm not trying to shut, yep, you're disrespectful to everyone else that comes up here and abides by the rules of this meeting.
I don't believe I am, I'm sorry.
I do.
I have a lot, a lot of notes.
All right.
But I'm not going to say much.
Ma, would you like to come up and comment?
All I'm going to say is, you're not going to hear me?
You can come up to be recognized. Those are the rules of the meeting. You're an able-bodied man. What you're doing is disrespectful to everyone else in the other room.
Okay. Mark Kleckman, twenty-eight Ward, Red Drive. Everyone in this room is certainly entitled to their opinion, pro or con. We have to respect that. This room represents about one-half of one percent of Newbury's voters. And so I would suggest that the board of selectmen, in its final vote, take that into consideration. There's a much larger audience than what's in this room, myself included, that you need to speak to and that you need to work for. I can't tell you how much I appreciate Jeff's last comments relative to the six and a half million dollar asking figure from, what is now, what, two and a half years ago. It was a mistake, and I recognize it was a mistake.
I'm glad you did. I wish I had.
I've stood up at town meetings and in this room and praised to no end the quality of this board, the quality of the town administrators, organization and team, and I continue to do so. I have no question about the trustworthiness, the ambitiousness, and the consideration that they've given to everybody's opinions as they've gone through their deliberations. That said, you need to do more as a board. You know, as a board, if you vote, I don't care whether it's a unanimous vote or a majority, if the vote passes, and your board to ask for an additional four million, five million, whatever it is, you need then to create a clarion call between now and town meeting to get that accomplished. When we worked on Vote Yes three years ago, we had time, we had our own budget, we had our own resources, we sent flyers out to every taxpayer in this community. Some liked it, some didn't. That's fair, that's politics. That's government. We don't have the luxury of any of those things right now. We are tight against a midnight deadline. And so my first recommendation would be that you cut through all of the fiction and deal with the facts, including why the chief police needs what he needs, and you get that into the hands of every voter in this town. You spend a few hundred bucks, and you send a well-crafted letter out to every resident of this town, or every address in this town, making a clear, concise case why this is the best economics for this town, this is the best bang for the buck. Yes, we made a mistake. We're looking for more again. All right? It shouldn't have been there, six and a half million dollars. So don't allow people to make their decisions and cast their vote on the basis of, but you said six and a half, make it on the basis of what is real today. Because I sure as hell don't want to be spending another four to five million dollars over the next forty years renting at crazy how many, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year, something like that? Is that what we're paying for rent here?
One-seventy thousand.
More than, okay. Whatever it is, given the economics of what's going to happen in the marketplace, we're going to spend five or six million dollars alone on rent, with no equity attached to that in the next twenty years. I'm not anxious to sign up for that. So please do what you need to do to get this vote done, and then go to work. Reach every voter in this town.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and speak? Come on up, Fred.
So when we started this originally, we didn't overland. We don't land now, is that right?
Correct.
And we do have.
You're talking about the real line.
Yeah.
Correct.
So what I'm thinking, and I'm kind of directing this to Alicia, because she likes to wrap her arms around this.
Wake up.
You know, I think we might be moving a little too quick. You know, I think you might want to think about the May meeting, that people commit. It's only going to be six months, make sure how much your taxes are going to go up or down.
We're going to have to do that anyways.
So, you know, it's just, when we first did this, years ago, you had a lot of needs. And, you know, I think that's the way to go. My concern is, how does it look? I mean, how does it look? Are you driving down Little High Street in Newbury, and all of a sudden you see this big monster, like you make it sort of aesthetically?
Mr. Shaw, would you like to comment to the aesthetics of the building and why it's shaped the way it is?
So we haven't obviously done an image. Nobody knows what this is going to look like yet, and that's because the study was focused mainly on the granularity of coming to a program and a budget that will work. But obviously, as an architect, we've looked at that when we've been designing the site layout and the building layout, so particularly, this slide has changed. All right, so computers, that's a work. But anyways, the site plan was there, you know, the area around, if this is the shape of the building, this part of the building is inside the ground, and so the ability for a mortarist on the street, you're really only seeing a one-story building, maybe a one and a half. It starts to come down on this side where you get more of a two-story building in here, and then the ins and outs here, these would be gable ends and gable end here, so the gables start to break the form of the mass of the building down into triangular shapes, roof lines that pitch and draw, so that it has an attractive quality to it. I think, you know, eventually, if the board asks, an image can be created, and that could help to show which way this is headed. The materials that we're thinking, you know, lap siding, cover-type siding, corner boards, things, asphalt shingles, things that would fit in to the community, you know, this isn't a building that we have the budget to build without a masonry here, you know, it'd be nice, it'd be great, we just don't have that budget. So we're trying to build materials that are light in the community and still can hold up to what people's expectations of building would be.
I just think as far as Alicia talking about, if you're being there, it might be a good idea to have that in place before the building is built, you know, where you're going to need it and what you're going to want. I mean, the May town meeting is six months away. You can tell people, you know, it's not going to matter when you vote on it in two weeks or on the May. People deserve to start at square one where we've all started. We started back at square one, show how much taxes are going to go up or down, what's being paid off, you know, I think.
I think at town meeting, we're planning to do all that.
This is coming down.
Just kind of town meeting.
So you're not going to give people any time to...
We're going to talk about that thing.
That's just my, I'm the one concerned, you know, the library was built twenty years ago because of town mistakes, and you know that today, there's always stock or move. If you're going to build something, you've got to get it right, you know, you've got to get it right tonight.
Fred, if we, if we vote on it at this town meeting, which is not determined yet, we still have a lot of input time with the architect to make sure we get it right. It's not like we're suddenly going to break ground before the frost hits. We have a lot of time, we can have a lot of open meetings with the architect, that's part of the program, and that's part of why we hired you.
But you can't change the things. The citizens, once this is voted on at the special town meeting, and then voted on ten days later at the election, you know, I just think, you're going to have a better chance of winning or losing if you wait until the election. Anyhow, that's my point. I just think it's going to be a long way to go. Thank you, Fred.
I think, JR, I think one of the things that kind of enlightened me was, best-case scenario, if this went through town meeting and the ballot, what is the time between that period of time and when we begin? How long is it? If we started right now, if we had the vote, how long would it take for us to shuffle the ground?
Well, a little bit depends on when we start, but let's say we were to start our work December first.
Okay.
Or maybe even, you know, maybe two.
December first is good.
December first. Typically, to go through this process, it's about a six-month design through bid documents type of process, so we'd be talking about May timeframe, wrapping that up, and then it's six weeks to two months of bidding and contract negotiation. So we're looking at probably shovels in the ground August, with some expectation that if the design comes into form real quickly, we might be able to speed things along a little faster, but I wouldn't plan any sooner than that.
Seven months would be an ambitious time.
Seven months would be more, I mean, if nothing's impossible, but it would be more ambitious to get it done in seven months, but I'd say plan.
And that's in the project world.
Yeah, well, yeah. And in a lot of ways, you know, we'd still have to go through regulatory approvals, through the town, get all the permits we would need, approvals that we'd need, so that piece of work takes some time as well. So, you know, I think it potentially could be sped up, but I would expect that we'd be looking at a summertime breaking of ground and therefore some work that we have, a little bit of which we're going to prefer to have.
So anyway, those time elements kind of scared me a little when I looked at them too, Fred. And the only other thing, and this is just me, the only other thing that got me thinking, and I'm a woodworker, I make decoys and I love wood, but when we had the nine-point-four million police station and town hall reconstruction, and it had inadequate program needs, I'm starting to think to myself, holy mackerel, we're putting three million plus into an older building. So where I started to change in which stream was, and I'm not a big lover of big buildings or new construction, but we haven't done a lot to our buildings in a long time in Newbury, and at least both of these buildings combined would be new. So that was part of the process I arrived at, like this.
Anyone who hasn't spoken yet that would like to comment, anything new? Jim, come on up, Jim. I'll, you're next.
I'd like to, excuse me. Jim Moran on one oh four Elm Street, Lyell. I'd like to go to the last page on the handout, and a drawer item saying if you build two structures, if the design fee is two thousand square feet, are we saying that the proposed square footage is eighteen-six, so if two structures, it would go to twenty thousand six hundred? What would the distribution be then between the police station and town hall?
Between the two buildings, it would mostly go to the police station, but you could consider it, all right, we're now considering the frame of being part of that town hall that's shared. So because it's shared, you can make, you can put the labels on them either way, but the police station would need a training room, it would need an elevator, it would need boiler rooms, electric rooms, all the other stuff that a shared building.
So again, what's the distribution, the twenty thousand six hundred?
So here you see the ten-four and then eight-two. This would probably go to ten-two, and that would stay at ten-four.
The ten-four would be for the town hall, and ten-two would be for the police station. The second item is the design fees, go to four hundred thousand dollars additional? Is that already in the contract? You have basically a basic fee of five hundred and fifty thousand?
No, there's no basic fee, it's all based upon what we're doing. So if we're asked to design two separate buildings, two separate projects, you're going to pay twice.
So the total cost to you would be if we did two structures, would be how much?
I don't remember what the line item is, but it's approximately, that's the approximate cost, additional cost for adding a second building. And I'm also assuming that it's not, we're not being asked to design them at the same time, you know, because you're not going to view these. That's the basic assumption here, that we're not doing two projects at the same time.
So we're clear, the four hundred thousand really would be added to your five hundred and fifty, and it's in the agreement of present?
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know exactly what's there, but that's, that would be an additional cost.
Additional cost, okay. Then you've got two years, another four hundred and fifty for escalation. Why would the de-escalation for two years have five percent?
That's what my basic assumption was here, that you're not building the town hall, you're building police stations first, you're not building a town hall at the same time. That building is going to be built in the future. That's two years later, that's the cost for two years.
But it wouldn't be building a new town hall, it'd be adding one into the old town.
This assumes two new buildings, because this, the basic assumption in this option is you take the proposed option, which is a new structure, and you build two new buildings.
So I'm clear, we have a standalone police station in one location, then you tear down the town hall and build a brand-new town hall.
That is what is the assumption.
That's what's being said.
That's the assumption here. Remember, we already looked at what would happen if we renovated, and that was more expensive than this option and the previous assumption.
Now, so just to try to get a total clarity for everybody, we're now taking a plan, if we do two structures, we're making a twenty thousand six hundred square feet. Two years ago, the town wanted seventeen thousand six hundred square feet, so the comparison with the two is an additional three thousand square feet, but additionally, we're saying that the six-point-five million dollar figure is now thirteen million dollars. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yeah. And this option includes, we have to remember, includes third-story storage, which the town's in desperate need of.
I understand, we're just, and while I'm talking here, I'm just trying to get it out because I'm sure this will be the same comments two weeks from now.
Understood.
And the clearer we are here, so I found it, I guess I can't quite accept these numbers, but they're your numbers, and we'll go from there. It's just hard to believe that you would take a plan two years ago and double the cost and do two things. First, you double the cost, and secondly, you tear down town hall, six thousand square feet, and you're going to build a brand-new, so you're going to build two brand-new buildings. One would be a new town hall, and one would be a new police station, versus the plan two years ago, it's like build one new police station and renovate town hall.
Right, to be clear, the plan before us is one combined building.
I understand what the plan for, but I'm trying to compare because I'm sure this is going to be a very important discussion. So you feel with this explanation that for us to go back to the old plan, it would cost a million dollars more, and it wouldn't be in the best interest of the town, right?
I don't think it fulfills our program needs. I don't think it fulfills our program needs, and I don't think it's allowed this use of tax dollars to punch a bunch, pump a bunch of money into an old building. I really don't.
So to explain why that 2016 plan is not a better plan, you're really saying the new plan costs a million dollars less than the old plan?
We're in two different time periods. We have to keep that into consideration too. Things cost more now.
I don't think we can compare apples. You're not comparing apples to apples.
No, actually, actually, we're not. Two years ago, we said we needed $17,600 square feet. Today, we're saying we need 3,000 square feet more. And today, we're saying that we need a combined building of $12 million versus two new buildings of $13 million.
Say that again? Say that again?
Okay. Two years ago, we proposed, the town proposed voters to agree to build new police station and renovate town hall. The total combined, the aggregate square footage is 17,600 square feet. The proposal today is to increase that by 3,000 square feet and then double the price from 6.5 to $13 million based on what we just talked about.
Jim, the $6.5 million was never the right number. We couldn't do it then. When it was proposed, we thought we could. We were wrong. It was never gonna get built at that cost.
That would be subject to discussion at the town hall. I'm sure you're aware that over in Merriman, they're saying just the opposite of what you're saying.
8.5 million for just a police station is what they're saying.
That's correct.
Which is $2 million more than 6.5, if I'm correct.
I understand, but under the magnitude...
Their site's also a lot different than ours. It's not visible from the road. It's got a long driveway. It's concealed. And I'm not knocking their design, but it would not be aesthetically pleasing in our town. I think it would make a lot of people upset. It's a very plain, monolithic box with very few windows.
I see the plan, I talk with the chief. I need to know what the details.
But the only thing is too, and it's really, it's mind-blowing to me, but when you start to get up into 8.5 for an 8,700 square foot police station in Merriman...
84.
So you're already up to 8.5 million?
Six, 6.5.
Is it 6.5?
Yeah.
All right. You know, what happens is, I think everyone's gonna find that when you try to put these costs down for program use, that's where we got caught. And we're not saying that we're totally right. And we want the people within the town, we're doing the very best we can for the people that work in town hall and our policemen, so that we don't build a building that really kind of goes out of use very quickly because of spatial needs. Because then you really haven't done much, you've spent a lot of money and you haven't met the criteria. There's, there's no hocus pocus. We just learned a lot. Hey, I'm the one that did the 6.5, so you gotta understand, it's, it's a big understanding for me. Eric and I sat at a, at a meeting and we thought, well, maybe we could do this. In these days and times, it's very different now. When you put down all the needs that we're trying to fill, that's what's happened to us. So like I keep saying to people, if the grassroots movement within this town is the fact that they don't wanna spend that money, we totally understand. It's, we're not gonna be the least bit surprised or mad or anything. We're just, we're trying to put out what we feel is the best plan after finally getting to talk to an architect.
Do you have, do you have another question before I move on to the next person waiting?
Chip, the combined building, the floor-to-floor difference in elevation, I had read a note by somebody, it said it was like 13 feet. Is that right? Now, what's the current floor-to-floor? I'm gonna say it must be 10 or 11 maybe, or those?
I would, I would, that would be the 10 feet.
Okay, let's, 9 feet a fair number?
Maybe, maybe.
The floor and the police station, 7 foot 3 inches.
Okay, and then you have the joists, so it's 8 to 9 feet?
It's 8 feet exactly. Go from a drop tile ceiling.
Typical house.
So if we say it's 9, the new is gonna be 13, that means that the current first floor of the town hall is gonna be 4 feet above, further above grade than it is today. So you presently have about a 6-foot rise from grade to get there. Now you're gonna have about a 10-foot rise. So first, the building is gonna stretch 4 feet above grade, and additionally, it's gotta stretch how much higher because of the add-on?
Well, I disagree with the 4 feet above grade comment, or 6 feet above grade comment. This is the site plan here. There, the existing town hall is right here. There are some steps to get up here. It's not 6 feet above grade. There is gonna be a bigger grade difference, no question about it. But we have an area in front of the building here where we can start to slope the ground from the street so that that can be taken care of.
6 feet may be wrong, but 5 feet is critical.
It will be higher, no question about it. It will be higher than the existing building.
Looking at the floor plans, I believe you show the Sally Port for the new police station in the back of the building.
All right, Jim, after this, please wrap it up, because we gotta move, we gotta leave room for some other things.
I don't know if that really works with the grade. Make that work, the grade has to come in flat and then turn into that.
There's gonna be a rise back there.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. All right, Ms. Matthews?
Yes.
Come on up.
Leslie Matthews, 111 Main Street, Lafayette. I only have just more, a question to ask, it's real simple. It was brought up at the building committee meeting last week, that perhaps it would be advantageous to everybody in the community to have an open forum so that people can come in and hear both sides of the story instead of just receiving in the mail one side of the story. So, I mean, is this something that we can get on the table before town meeting? And I know you said that you found that they didn't work, well, in the past, but I think this is a current thing.
I didn't find that they didn't work. I felt like we were attracting the same handful of people over and over, but I am, I'm open to a public forum.
We've already, we've already tried to set up around Jeff's schedule, a meeting. Tracy, what did we come out with?
Saturday.
It's Saturday, even though it's a holiday weekend, I don't know if you're filled for that, but we're trying to, depending on what occurs...
Saturday, the 6th?
Yeah, given the schedule, we're trying to work in an open forum.
A day evening or a Saturday?
Saturday, Saturday.
I think, you know, that's important enough that most people, they were finding themselves depending just on the information instead of walking to the special town meeting. Really confused of how the whole system has worked for the rest of us then, following these meetings right along and educating ourselves on how, you know, one side feels, the other side feels, and then just doing our own, you know, work to see, is there other, are there other alternative plans that can be made and made down the path? Or, you know, how can we financially make this more sustainable to the community so that more people are on board to inform?
We definitely have tried to put that meeting together to say, and then on what happens tonight.
Well, you know, just, I'm more than willing to send out a message to the people that I know to be involved in the forum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll do something.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone that hasn't spoken yet and wants to bring up a point that hasn't been made yet? Come on up.
I have two questions, Craig Loes from Washington Street.
Can you just stay here, please? Just with the viewers at home?
Just it.
Oh.
Craig Loes from Washington Street.
I'm sorry, I missed it, I'm sorry.
Two questions. One, is there any state funding available for this project? And if so, what are we looking at?
We've looked at a lot of different things, or I have looked at a lot of different things. Currently, we're, we've gotten ourselves onto the bond budget list. Whether or not that actually comes to fruition is something that we won't know immediately, but we have, we are on that list, so there is potential to get $1.5 million from the state.
Bruce, when he came to our last meeting to speak about, it's not a given, right, but the fact that they're gonna try to earmark $1.5 million.
It's not a guarantee, but we're in the mix.
Well, I understand that, but that, you're talking about a $12 million project, but now you have to put furniture in there, you have to put radios for the police and everything. So that's, I don't know, how much, I don't know that's gonna cost.
I think that's included.
Oh, that is included? Oh, okay.
FF and E.
First things first.
Second question. When does the debt exclusion end for the combined projects?
That's a good question.
Is it 2028?
Tracy, do we have any specifics on what it requires for how, how a little bit of people get on?
Assuming the schedule that you had mentioned, I would, in all likelihood, go out and issue short-term debt, which would be rolled over for a period of two years, leaving 28 years that you would see, feel the impact of the override on your tax bill. The current estimates based on the $12 million project amount are approximately $275 a year for a property valued at about $500,000, which is an average...
Yeah, but I guess maybe I'm asking the question, well, you're giving me a different answer than I expect. When does the debt exclusion end for the projects right today?
What's on the books today? When's that going?
Yes, when is that going?
2020 would be the last payment, but the biggest amounts were paid off in 2015, the largest amounts.
Okay, well, that's just around the corner. So that being paid off, how much money is that per year?
That's only, again, in 2015, I think you heard the finance committee talk about it being a perfect storm so that the impact would only be about $50 a year, the average tax fare.
No, I'm not talking taxes. How much money is that?
That's what I was gonna say. So at that point in time, we were paying off about a million dollars worth of debt. Since then, it's continued to decline, where this year, we only have $472,000 worth of debt. Next year, we'll only have $86,000, then we'll be paid off completely. So you're going to feel the impact. What our plan was, was to layer it on, so the average property, again, valued at $500,000, would only feel about an impact of $50 a year. But each year that it's been deferred, interest rates are going up and the impact that you will feel is increasing. So now, everything, you know, as it is currently based on the $12 million projection, an average property will feel an impact of about $275 a year for 28 years resulted from this project alone.
Is this an override you're looking for or a debt exclusion?
It's a debt exclusion override.
Both.
It's, that's what it's called, a debt exclusion override.
Meaning when it's, meaning when it's paid off, it goes away.
Yeah, we're not overriding the tax base. Your tax, your regular tax rate is not gonna change. What we're overriding is the right to issue debt so that we can borrow, like go to, go get a mortgage. We have to, town meeting has to, yeah. So your tax base, correct me if I'm wrong, your tax base is not gonna go up, your regular tax rate. This, this has nothing to do with that.
Just for that period of 28 years, you pay the extra $275 and then it goes away.
I'm gonna be here.
Enough at all.
I won't be either.
So if I might speak a concern about money, just a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Loes.
One of the things that we have looked at is, we have a veteran's deferment and a senior deferment, so if people in neither of those categories wanna work, they can work off any of the increase up to $1,000. There's also general deferments, and the auditor will work with, the principal assessor will work with anyone for whom this would be a financial impact and struggle. So if it is a challenge, you can work with the town. And I've begun conversations with JR and Tracy about starting a fund to help people further than that, but we aren't at that point yet because we haven't changed the structure. So we are looking at how to make this have a minimal impact for everyone, because we want this to go forward and want it to be a success for the community in general. So we want everyone to be happy with this building, yes.
Can we make one more comment? You mentioned veterans, task commander of the Kings and DFW post from 98. And we should adopt the same practice that the state of the Hampshire does. They give all veterans a break on their property taxes. Unfortunately, you only give a break to disabled veterans.
I don't think that's what we adopted, is it?
Yes.
The exemptions for disabled.
Disabled?
Yes, disabled. And also, if a veteran wants to work off $1,000, you can, but I really think you should look to our neighbors in the north. All veterans should get a break on their taxes. Thank you.
Is that something that the state has to do with each town?
One thing, one thing too, and I don't know if it's really physically sound, viscally sound, but we have talked about, which is the same thing we talked about when we were discussing some of the last reiterations of things. I mean, Tracy's done a good job. What do we certify, 1.5 million?
Free cash.
So there was possibility maybe to go forward and take a certain amount of free cash each year, which we seem to be able to do, and knock the price by backfilling it and get it way down. And government has pledged to give us money for a building. So we could potentially have a, have an impact down, can I keep your question?
We need to go to town meeting with the 12, with the 12 million. We have, we have to, by law, get, let taxpayers know what the most impact it could possibly be. And then you can bet your bottom dollar, we, me, him, 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 him and her, are all gonna go after whoever we can at the state level and try to really bring this money down because I, I, I feel that the Commonwealth really needs to be a partner with us in this.
If, if we yearly dedicate free cash towards paying this down, we get a meaningful contribution from governors. And this is not a promise. It appears like we could potentially bring it down to around 208 or 210 a year per average household. And that's if we continue to pay down the principal every year with some of our free cash. The last few years, we've been in the position that we would be able to do so. Any other, any other comments before I close? Public comment? Okay, with that, I'm gonna, come on up, Ray.
No, I just wanted to say, don't mean to sit here and grill all you people and the architect, it's just we need to understand that some of us aren't gonna agree with you ever, but that's okay, this is America and it's all right.
Right, right. Not agreeing can be part of the process and getting grilled can be part of the process, so that's what it is. All right, thank you, Bernie. Any other comments from the board?
I have always, since the inception of this, been against doubling the price of it. I'm gonna stay with that, but I am gonna vote for putting it on the warrant for the simple reason I want the people to tell us which direction to go in. It's gonna be a very exciting town meeting.
Okay. All right. And now, Tracy, we can just move on to the warrant, correct?
Sure. Okay. The first article that was placed on the warrant was housekeeping primarily for addressing those nine island deficiencies that we've become aware of since the April 24th town meeting. What we're asking for in this article is the chairman of the planning board requested $6,500. He is retiring from the board, he's moving out of town. So he felt like this was an opportune time for him to bring to our attention the amount of time that the members of the planning board spend, and he thought it was appropriate that they receive a stipend. They are the, one of the only ones that have a five-year term. It's quite labor-intensive, the work that they do, so he felt where he's leading, that it was the appropriate time for him to bring that forward to the membership for consideration. So the $6,500 increase to the planning board stipend. The public buildings utilities is, we're requesting $10,000 increase, and that's based on the actual expenditures for fiscal year 2018. We have to do year-end transfers to cover the deficit, so we're just asking you to fund it at the same level. Far and hardly have an outlet, you'll recall, and we authorized the purchase of heating pumpers and in the last... additional $9,000. It's been a lot of discussion, you're probably very much aware of, Triton and Whittier assessments have both gone down since we initially approved them in April. So, the Triton assessment is asked, well, is being reduced by $195,532, and Whittier is being reduced by $21,449. So, in the aggregate, under Article 1, we're looking for net reductions of $191,081.
Vote to approve Article 1?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Article 2, is Chief Riley, Chief Riley? Do you wanna speak to the, I'm sorry, do you wanna speak to the repeater cabinet or just?
Yes. The repeater cabinet, right now, we have an off-site repeater, which is just a mechanism for our communications that enhances the radio signal. So, the signal from the tower, the police station gets bounced to our repeater for across town, so we can be heard across town and we can be heard wherever we are in the area. That cabinet used to be a, just like a Reed's Ferry shed out behind the state police barracks because we have our repeater up on the tower, so the mechanics of it has to be in the very vicinity. That shed fell apart when I was first chief back in '06, and we replaced it. It has to be climate-controlled, so we rented a storage container for mobile mini at the price of $172 a month for a climate-controlled storage container, which now it's been 12 years, it's starting to fall apart and is no longer contained and climate-controlled. So, this repeater cabinet is weatherproof, airtight, climate-controlled, and all it does is house our radio equipment out of the state police barracks. And that's all we need, and I'd much prefer to spend $172 a month on something else than renting a storage container. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would you like to approve Article 1?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi. Article 3, you may recall Chief Jager coming in and discussing the successful grant program that they were awarded for, they had previously come in the year before to the Capitol Planning Committee asking for $250,000 for self-contained breathing apparatus. They did receive the grant. It's 39 units, mask units, and 78 bottles. Because they were successful in the grant, with the grant approval, they only need to provide a $25,000 match. So, this appropriation from free cash will provide the match.
Motion to approve Article 3?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's great that we got a grant for it.
Absolutely. All those in favor?
Last time, the breathing apparatus, it was one of the overrides back in all the
five, the 250,000 or something.
Much better price now.
Right, right. Article 4, with some of the savings that we're going to realize from the drop in the assessments, the Triton and Whittier assessments, in conversation with the chairman and vice chairman of the Finance Committee, it's our recommendation that we move $180,000 into the stabilization fund. That will, the current balance of the stabilization fund is around $267,000. We're still not fully funding our asset replacement schedule, but we're, we're getting there, understanding that we didn't wanna commit that money to a recurring line item, so we wanna be somewhat disciplined because we know we're gonna have to spend that money in the future on education.
So, that brings the stabilization fund to the center of that?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, good.
Motion to approve Article 4?
Aye.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
May I ask a question? Just if the money was approved for the school department, doesn't that money have to stay with the school department or can you just take it and move it to something else?
The, we can't, town meeting can. The money was appropriated in April to be spent for the Triton assessment and the Whittier assessment, but the school, both school committees ended up reducing their operating budget, which, so we have to reduce the amount we're going to pay to them. So, in Article 1, you're seeing that reduction. And then, under Article...
Four.
Four, we'd be moving those funds into our stabilization fund. So, it's a one-year, we're kind of moving it there just for this year, knowing that in all likelihood our assessments will be going up next year. So, we'll need that recurring.
It potentially could be, well, special needs.
The cost.
I don't think there'll be more kids, but I think the cost is gonna continue to go up.
Everything else, especially.
We can have a one council.
Any other, do you have a motion?
You already have a motion. Articles 5 and 6 both relate to the Newbury Fire Station sewer connection project. The, one was the design account and one was the construction account. Those projects, that project's obviously been completed. The design account had a balance of $21,685.44, and the construction came in $31,293.77 under budget. These, these requests would transfer those amounts into the previously established police station, town hall, project account. It was a contingency fund that was set up at the last town meeting. So, the idea would be to sweep those balances into the contingency fund in the event that any of the project costs came in higher than anticipated. You wouldn't need to go back for further appropriation, you'd have it available.
They're starting to get some money in that account?
A little bit.
They'd be close to $100,000 if these were approved.
Motion to approve 5 and 6?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Article 7 is the debt authorization for the project. One point that's important to note, I had an email that came in from the online system asking if we made this appropriation, would that mean in effect we have 6.5 plus $12 million? But just wanted everybody to know that we're pretty much starting from scratch, and the motion that will be made under Article 7 will ask for an appropriation of $12 million and will vote to rescind the action taken at the January 31st, 2017 meeting. So, you're appropriating the full $12 million and rescinding the 6.5 million.
Motion to approve Article 7?
Aye.
Discussion?
I wanted to discuss a little bit, I did some looking at the Apple Building Chuck after your suggestions from the last meeting. And I just wanted to put some of the numbers that I, I came up with on that out there because I think it's not as financially viable as you had suggested. Because it looks like it would cost $1.7 million to buy at least if you don't have an offer from them. I looked at the space to get our needs in there with a conference room, egg access studio, it looks like a pretty much complete renovation outside of the elevators and the bathrooms. So, that's between 2.8 million and 3.6 million dollars in renovation costs.
I disagree wholeheartedly with that.
I know you do, but the numbers are the numbers. I used a very low renovation cost. Eric suggested a much higher renovation cost.
I know he does.
You know, it's gonna be a big renovation, we're basically gonna have to gut that building to get in. Which brings us to a minimum of 4.5 to get into a 20-year-old building. The parking's insufficient there, there's some questions about the septic, it's not on Town Subur, it doesn't have Town, it has biofuel water, right? Yeah, so it has water. And it's an old building, so there's Title V, and it's gonna be more expensive to use annually because it's a 20-year-old building. So, I really think it's a much more expensive option than we were thinking it was.
Okay, I'm afraid I have to disagree with you on that. We were knocking out some of the walls in there and just on the bottom floor, so that you could have one big room for a conference room on the left-hand side, it would be more than enough. We appropriated $2 million to buy the building, 1.7 to buy it and put 300 into it, it would be more than enough to get us into that building. The septic system was Title V 18 months ago, the guy who built it Title Fied it, and he said it's good for another 18 months. And he said if it was not good, he would replace it for cost of the town. I mean, he stands behind the system. The parking, I talked with the head of District 4 today, and he said if we were fortunate enough to get that building, he would supply that piece of land that goes between the Apple Building and the exit of 95 for overflow parking. So, more than enough. Just my take on it.
Yeah, I'd want that written before anything happened, but...
It is an option, sir.
It's an option. I just, you know, Chuck's presentation of it does was that it was 1.7 and nothing else spent. My looking at the building is, it's a big renovation, it's not nearly so easy to get into it as presented.
I've looked at the building, but my first question, every time a client brings up existing building and police station, police stations are required to meet classification, are occupancy classification four, it's the highest level of strength that you can have for a structural building in Massachusetts. They're the same on par with hospitals, the idea is that in a seismic event, an earthquake or hurricanes, something like that, these buildings are gonna be the ones that withstand.
Everything.
If everything else falls down, they would still be up. And so, we would have to make the, a pretty big assumption at this point, and may not prove out that this building was built to withstand those loads. And most commercial buildings, office-type building, particularly if it was 20, 15, 20 years old, probably aren't. So, that has to do with foundations, that's the, the welds and the welding and the connections of the steel. So, there could be costs associated with upgrades to the building to meet the size and class. It's been done before, not saying it's not possible, it's just something that, when we get involved in these things, that's the first thing I go to. Most other things are more easily fixable than the structure itself because, as you pointed out, if you're gutting a building, what you have left is the structure, but now if you're telling, telling a client that the structure isn't even good, there is an impact there. So, I just want you to know about that before you go down any of those roads.
I think that the idea was is that it would just be at the town hall, not the police station.
That's fine, I would probably, you know, that, that classification's only for police facilities, it's not for town hall or other stuff.
Well, basically, the point is moved right now because it's not going to go on to the warrant, so let's stop arguing about it right now and let's continue on getting the warrant done.
Any other discussion on Article 7? Is there a motion? Let me know.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article 8 is the HR board, I think Chairman Glickman had come and he made a presentation to the board previously, but they were working on updating all of their bylaws and personnel policies. When they completed their review, they sent it to town council for review and comment, and basically, this is the result of what came back. I think it's important to note that there are no additional benefits being afforded to employees or anything like that. What they did, the intent was to streamline it and make it, instead of being a policy document, a setup as a bylaw that require a town meeting and Attorney General and all that, every time you wanted to change it or update a, you know, a work-free drug policy or the lights, the bylaw would stand alone and all of the policy documents, if you wanted to, I don't know, implement a dress code or you wanted to do something along those lines, any, any of those individual policies would have to come before the board for approval. But it took the policy piece out of the bylaw piece, so that's what you're seeing here.
Motion to approve Article E? Discussion?
I have a question. Do you remember when I came before, storms and events that would warrant Town Hall to be closed? Is that a thing?
No. Nope. That would be something that could be changed in the policy if the board wanted to, but it was not their recommendation to move that forward.
Okay. I think the one thing for discussion that needs to be brought up is the town clerk and the constable moving to appointed positions, which is a...
That's Article 9, that's the next one.
Oh, that's Article 9, sorry, jumping ahead. Never mind, I'm done.
That's a good question. Article 9 is...
We can put it on our plate, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 9 is the article that is proposing amendments to the, let's see, Chapter 460 of the Acts of 2008, the Act establishing a selected administrative form of government in the town of Newbury. I believe, yeah, in 2008 it was established. So, since that time, things have changed. Right at the very beginning, you can see the formerly known as the Personnel Board is now the Human Resources Board. We used to have a Board of Fire Engineers, now we function under a strong chief, so that's, that needs to be changed. What was a Highway Superintendent is a Public Works Director. Most of these positions listed under Section B just weren't there or had different names at that point in time. The significant change request is relative to the town clerk and the constables. Those are currently elected positions. Leslie Haley, who was the town clerk, brought it to our attention that she's going to, gave us her retirement date, which is only a couple of years away. And she, we've had a lot of conversations with it, and she and I met with Lisa Mead to talk about it. And one of the things, I think we finally, at the end of the conclusion of the conversation, decided that it's very important for the position to be a resident, that frequently people wanna see someone that they're familiar with, where the town clerk is the information hub of the community. So, rather than making it an elected position, though, we came down to making it appointed with a residency requirement to ensure that you get someone with the proper qualifications. The town clerk's role, pretty much over the last 15 years, has increased significantly.
It's pretty complex.
It's very complex.
My concern is that we don't have anybody run if we keep it elected.
And that is why she brought forward appointing the constables, because she's been having a hard time getting constables to serve in all the various jobs that they hold and wanting to get someone who is qualified for that position. So, that, those are the two things that are, you know, substantive changes. Other than that, the rest of them are just changes in title and the chief.
So, the town clerk is gonna have a residency requirement, what about the constables, would they as well?
Yes, they would.
Yeah.
That's gonna be an interesting discussion on the town hall. I've run into this before trying to take elected positions away. Remember the one with Fish Commissioners?
Who goes to appoint?
That was lively.
Yep, the board appoints. The board appoints. Now, who would appoint them? The board has elected to appoint, right?
The administrator brings the appointment before the board. And it's supposed to be the town administrator appoints with the approval of the court's document.
Motion to approve Article 9?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do we have a...
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, do we have warrants?
No warrants.
Yeah. We need a motion to sign the warrant.
Oh, motion to sign the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming up.
Fred. Fred.